Okay, it is 6:00 PM. Brian, can you hear us okay? No, Brian, you're a...
Yeah, Jacob.
All right.
I can hear.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please join with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. This is the regular meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Brian Barrett via Zoom, Township Manager Julia Heilica, Engineer John Tressler, and our Solicitor Ron Karasak. Announcements, there was a brief executive session this evening from 5:33 to 5:51 in regard to the letter from the developer for the Shawnee Valley PRD. That said, no action is to be taken. First order of business is the minutes of the August 24th meeting. We currently have those before us. Has everyone had the chance to take a look at those minutes? Okay, motion by Mr. Lovenheim. All second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is the public hearing on the conditional use application by Sean Ian for the golf course bridge. At this point, I'll turn it over to our Solicitor for opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, the board, those of you who have not been here before, my name is Ron Karasak and I am the duly appointed Solicitor to the township. And my job is to render legal advice to the township on various matters. And that will be my function today in these proceedings in the event there is an issue with respect to legal matters that need to be addressed. Before we begin the formal hearing, there are some housekeeping items that I need to review. First of all, this is a public hearing being held pursuant to the township zoning ordinance and also the Pennsylvania Townspeople's Planning Code. Secondly, this is a hearing in which this is a now, a conditional use is somewhat a little different than a special exception use. Those of you who might be familiar with zoning matters, special exception uses are determined by the zoning hearing board. A conditional use is determined by the Board of Supervisors. The reason for that is that the courts and law feel that conditional uses which are more not so much more important, but perhaps more intense than a special exception use should be decided by the elected officials, which are the supervisors, not merely the appointed officials, which are the zoning hearing board members. In this particular case, there are two burdens, if you will. The first burden of persuasion or burden of proof is on the applicant to show that the applicant has met the ordinance requirements for a conditional use. And once that burden has been met, the burden would shift to any objectors who would want to contest the conditional use to show that the use would be contrary to the health, welfare, and health of residents and in a special fashion, and that is that the effect of the use would create more of a problem or create more of a response than would be normally expected from the use in question. So that's the standard that would have to be met by any objector who would want to contact this matter. Now, let me say one other thing. There are there's a difference between parties to a proceeding and a public commentator. A party is someone that's more than just a public commentator who offers comment either before or after and for or against the project. A party would have a direct, substantial, and immediate interest in the proceedings. That is more than the general interest that will be common to all township citizens or residents, taxpayers, and the like. That would be, for example, someone whose property immediately joins the property that's being part of the hearing. So it could also be a property owner who is immediately adjoining and would be affected by any traffic or lighting or noise that might be generated by the project in question. So if anyone here wants to claim party status in this matter, once my remarks, I will ask that you stand, express your reasons as to why you think you're entitled to be a party. At that point, if the applicant does not agree, the applicant can then question you and test whether or not you should be considered a party, and then the board will determine whether or not you should be given party status. If you are given party status, now you're a party. You can be questioned, and you can also question witnesses. And you could be asked to produce exhibits, and you can also ask that exhibits be produced. So that is a party. Now, those of you who want to simply be a public commentator, you should note that the law of Pennsylvania is that if you are a public commentator, and this isn't the PA Open Meetings Law, that you must either be a taxpayer in the township or a township resident. Those are the only two statuses that will allow someone to make a comment during a public meeting here in Smithfield Township. However, I can tell you, being the solicitor here now for 11, 12 years, that the Boards of Supervisors have always attempted to be responsive. They've always attempted to be transparent. And if anyone wants to make a public comment who may not fall in that category, usually the board will allow that within reason. So keep that in mind. And this is not a case in which I think there is any issues where we're gonna have to worry about decorum or people shouting out or talking over other people. It could be, but hopefully it's not. And more importantly, that young lady in front of you who's taking down what is being said can't take down two people talking at once, or someone talking over someone, or someone interrupting. So keep that in mind. If you want to speak on this project, everyone who wants to speak on this project will be given the opportunity to do so. All right, so that being said, I really don't have any other preliminary comments to make. I will turn the matter over to the applicant and applicant's planning professional to proceed with the public hearing. And again, a public hearing is really a public meeting. There's no magic. It's a public meeting, but it's meant to inform and advise the public of what a project is, and that's the purpose of the hearing. So, that being said, does anyone here want to be a party to this conditional use proceeding by the Shawnee in golf course with respect to this bridge? All right, I see no hands raised, so I'm going to assume that we are not going to have any party other than obviously the applicant himself. Now, one other housekeeping item, there are three exhibits that I want to introduce into the record. And they are considered board exhibits. Board exhibit number one is a copy of the newspaper advertisement that was in the paper with respect to this application. And that was advertised twice, once on August 30 and again on September 6. And that is noted as Board Exhibit One. I also have marked already Board Exhibit Number Two, which is an affidavit of posting under the Municipalities Planning Code, and again, our zoning orders. The property in question has to be posted at least one week before today's hearing. So this is a property, an affidavit of posting showing that the property was posted with the notice on August 31 of this year. And Board Exhibit Number Three is the Township Engineer Review Letter. Anytime an application comes before the township, the township engineer is required to review the application for engineering preciseness to make sure that it's accurate, to make sure that anything that is questionable is addressed. And so that Township Engineer Review Letter of July 7, 2022 is being made part of the record as Board Exhibit Number Three. On the back of the second page of that, there are some handwritten notes. Those handwritten notes are mine. It references the steel bridge and it says, and the handwritten note says, "Trust pipe." And then there's also a note that the bridge is to be posted at 10 tons. And my handwritten note says, "At," which means applicant is okay with this recommendation. So that being said, is anyone here on behalf of the applicant? And if so, do any of whoever is here, is there any objection to the introduction of these three exhibits into the record?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. My name is Christopher McDermott, and with Riley Associates. Again, here on behalf of Shawnee Inc., who is the applicant. We have no objection to the the Board's exhibits. And I've noted that the applicant's exhibits are associated with the application that was submitted in the letter dated August 5, which had quite a number of items in there, including the application for the hearing, a copy of the previous conditional use decision, various DEP approvals, and letters from the Army Corps of Engineer, a copy of the approved diversion, settlement, pollution control plan, narrative approval letter from the Conservation District, a letter from the Township Engineer, which is the same exhibit that the Board, the double Word B3, and as well as a revised conditional use plan, a sketch plan showing the bridge profile, and copies of the structural plans for the bridge itself. And I'd ask that they be submitted in mass as the applicant's submission.
All right, so let me ask you this so we're clear. First of all, it should be noted that based upon the statements of the applicant's engineer, that there is no objection to the township exhibits. And accordingly, they will be admitted into the record. As to the applicant's exhibit, what's the date of that letter again?
August 2022.
So the letter of August 5, 2022, submitted by Riley Associates under the name of Engineer McDermott, will be introduced into the record as applicant's number one. And all of the attachments will be considered part of that application for applicant's number one exhibit. Township has no objection to that exhibit, and accordingly, it is considered admitted along with the attachments.
And if you have all the attachments, if you don't, I have one right here.
Just give us a moment here, and let me have our engineer, Attorney Tressler, or Mr. Tressler, who's on my left here, to review the packet that's in front of him to make certain that those letters appear to be or those documents appear to be in his packet. While Mr. Tressler is reviewing the letter here, let me ask you- Let me ask you this, Mr. McDermott, and I have just your letter. And what we'll do is we'll have it marked by the. By the uh, stenographer as applicant's one.
Yeah, and and I will note on for this letter, I have two handwritten notes. Uh, regarding the copy of the board supervisor's decision, just the date on it is incorrect on the letter. I've got handwritten eight, two thousand and eight on it. And on item number four, E S C, E S P C plan, I noted that it was revised June first, two thousand twenty-five. Very good.
Let's bring this over to the young lady. We're gonna have her mark it. I'm assuming you have a copy of this.
Uh, somewhere.
Okay, well, before you leave, I'll make another copy.
Okay, when when John does that, should I just touch on uh, will the history just go?
Sure. What we should do, that was going to be. Are you, are you done?
I I'm done with everything, Chris, except I do not see, my important is. I think it's moved. But I do not see a copy of the. Pennsylvania DEP time extension. Everything else is here. That may be here too. Yeah, I'll provide you my copy. That is. Okay, okay. Everything is here now.
So then the record should reflect that the applicant's exhibit number one. Which is the Riley Associates letter in August five, twenty twenty-two. Under the signature of Mr. McDermott and the attachments are all part of the attachment file. And are made part of the record here.
And John, I believe you may have the hydraulic calculation book.
Yes.
Uh, I did not submit that as part of the the. Use application, but by reference, we we submitted that, uh. Maybe we should enter that into the record if you don't mind providing your copy, just to make sure.
Right.
And that is, this reverted to title. That is a hy- hydrologic and hydraulic floodplain analysis. Report dated May. Twenty twenty-two, prepared by Riley Associates for the bridge replacement at Shawnee on the Delaware Gulf.
Let's, let's do this here, John, with that letter from Penn Doc. And not extension letter.
Or the E P, I'm sorry. I just sort of threw it in there.
That's okay. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll copy, I'll copy that. Alright, so I would ask the board, just give me a moment. Let me just copy these so that everyone has them in this. What I'm going to do is simply copy the front page. And have that noted as applicants two for purposes of ease of. Being able to reference this. So that's when I return, you should start that with the background because this. This project did have a conditional use back in two thousand and eight and we should tell. The board and the public how that maybe has changed. This preamble may be longer than the. Maybe longer than the bridge.
Well. Hi.
Our other room over warm next to the here conditioning a little bit more.
I'm glad it was so big, the second time, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, seven.
With seventy-five, okay.
And then, then here is A one, okay. Please, so you know that. It's here as well. And that's the big package of it there.
Thank you again. Do you even tell my spirit where I'm from? Tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Um, then my, my name is Chris McDermott, um, of a regi- registered professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, I've been associated with this project for some, quite some time, so just as a matter of background is.
Before I, before I, uh, were, before I interrupted you, as I'm interrupting you. And we switched the easel around a bit so that not only the supervisors can see. What you're doing, but that the township, uh. Residents who are here can see too. Maybe some may have to change a seat or two, but at least they can see. Document and what, uh, to what you're referring to.
So, uh. Back in two thousand and eight, uh, Shawnee endeavored on a project to. Uh, replace the existing pedestrian golf cart bridge at the golf course. Most of you are probably familiar with the golf course, the. Uh, majority of the golf course hole on the island. There is a wooden bridge that is assembled and disassembled every year. So it, uh, and and it's a, a, uh. Quite a task for them to do that and it it has some limited capacity. And they really want to replace this bridge with a permanent structure. So in two thousand and eight, they they move forward that project. Now. Any structure that is located within the floodplain. In Smithfield Township is considered a conditional use. So. The bridge itself isn't subject to a conditional use. It's just that it's located in the floodplain. So at that time, we prepared an application and we had public hearings. And the board took action on that conditional use. In fact, the conditional use was granted. And it did have conditions, some, I believe, eight or nine conditions. Uh, that that were established back in two thousand and eight. Uh, part of the pu- uh, bridge presentation that time was that it was going to be a bridge that's located. Uh, just adjacent down, just a little downstream of existing wooden bridge. It was going to be two hundred and fifty feet long, abutment stretching from the land side with a, 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 an abutment on the island side. Uh. At that time, we we went through all the hydraulics, established that it would not have an impact on a hundred-year floodplain and, uh. Uh, presented all the necessary information. Part of the conditions were that, uh. Outside agency approvals be obtained and that would be through, uh, DEP conservation district, et cetera. So in the, in the year since then, Shawnee has been working to obtain those approvals, which we did. But at the same time, uh, you know, we went through economic downtimes and so they had to look for economical ways. To build the bridge, uh, not only just the materials, but physically how you build it. Over, over the spring, so, um. Through, through these years, it's finally come that the stars have aligned, they have funding in place. And they, they, uh, now identify a bridge type that they can build and not only build economically and obtain that economically. But also not have to be in the river itself to construct. Uh, the difference in this was that the original conditional use. Uh, visualized a wooden arch type of bridge. This bridge is going to be a metal truss bridge. Because the conditions of approval specifically said wooden truss bridge. And a wooden truss bridge that had a ten-ton limit. This is the crux of the matter while we're here. Uh, everything else is very close to the same, and I'll go over just some other minor changes. But the bridge we're proposing now, instead of it having a, a single, uh, or two abutment. Now has. What we're proposing. Is. The abutment on the island side in the same location, the bridge in the same location, the bridge at the same height. But it will stretch across that two hundred and fifty feet to a place where we're going to have a pier, but instead of just an abutment. It's going to be a pier, so, uh, foundation down low in the water and and, um. Publics to columns, pier, piers that would come up and support it. And then a seventy-foot long section that will extend within a button. And this, this became part of the economics of of building the bridge and also helped us to stay out of the spring, so. Uh, we've. In in the year since we've maintained, uh, obtained and maintained approvals through DEP, they've been provided. Uh, we've also updated our erosion settlement pollution control plan. To, uh. Accommodate or or to reflect the current configuration. Uh, so that's the purpose of why we're here is really to have the board acknowledge and approve. Those, those changes. One of the, one of the ramifications or or really benefit of the different bridge type is. This has a slightly higher carrying capacity. Instead of ten tons, it's fifteen tons. Uh, you, the township engineer has reviewed this, he. And one of the conditions specifically said that if we post it for ten tons, we don't have a problem. Well, we can post it for the lower amount and we'll. We'll, we'll agree to that. It just happens that the bridge could carry a little bit more. We, we've, we've made the application for the hearing and really we're here to ask the board. To approve that essentially modification of those. Two conditions, really only one condition, to just allow us to meet that second condition by opposing. With with the heavier bridge. And that, that is our whole ask.
Okay, that being said. Supervisors, you have some. You have any questions? I'm gonna ask John if there's anything he wants to add for purposes of. This testimony, but let's do that first and then we'll let you as the. Elected officials ask any questions at the end. John, you've heard what has been. Testified to. We have your, uh, review letter of. July seven, twenty twenty-two, inter- introduced into evidence as board exhibit number three. Is there anything that you would like to say with respect to this application as to whether or not there's anything? Disapproved or that you do approve or that. There's something else you would like to bring forth so that everyone here has a full and complete understanding of what's occurring?
Not really. I think Mr. McDermott, uh, did a good job of characterizing, uh, the history and the proposed changes. We did review those changes. Uh, in some ways, uh, I would agree that it's better than the original approval. Uh, both from a hydraulic standpoint and probably from a structural standpoint, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
And and since this is in the floodplain, I believe, is what we just talked about. Uh. Is there any problem with respect to? This bridge creating any issue in the floodplain that would create any? Downstream hydraulic issues or? Property or things going downstream that could hurt other people's property, et cetera?
No, that was vetted both at the time of the original. Approval and again now with the DEP with new bridge. Uh, structure. And there are no problems. And 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 that is the reason, uh, we updated our hydraulic. Hydrologic and hydraulic study to reflect the, the. The new abutment alignment. Here location. Uh, to establish that.
Okay. Or do you have any questions of Mr. McDermott?
I do not, Robert, Brian?
If you want ten tons, they say it's a fifteen-ton bridge. Can we compromise at twelve-five?
You can make it fifteen if you like. Uh, I just. Review the additional or the original conditions of approval. Uh, I've been trying to second guess why they said ten tons. Sometimes people like to post bridges at a specific weight or design them at a specific weight to limit what traffic might use those. Uh, they don't want heavier.
It's best not to test it because if it were posted fifteen, someone might say, oh, seventeen's okay.
Or they may want to change the use and upgrade the bridge. I don't know. That's why I suggested going with the ten ton. I mean, if you stipulate that there is fifteen ton, they, they vote that if that's acceptable to the board. I, I don't know that the golf course has any intention of making loads that heavy. Across the benefit of positive is if there was somebody unassociated with the golf course. That that would want to cross the bridge, it notifies them.
So what, what are you saying? Do you, ten tons is okay or you want fifteen?
I think we can live with ten tons, but. The bridge does have a fifteen-ton limitation. What goes into the, the determination of those limitations are a lot of factors to say. So. In case somebody should overload it, but that would be. That would be the posted amount we.
Jacob, you're right. And I would tell you, Mr. or Supervisor Loebenheim, that. If in fact the applicant would want to say, you know what? We've been having this now here for a year, ten tons. You could really just increase it to fifteen. They can come back and you can grant that request. It's not. A mon- it's not a major change that would require another. Public hearing unless John believes it would be, but. Then grant that request at that time if it's needed.
I would say that the, the weight capacity of the bridge. Has no impact or import to the reason that this was a conditional use. Reason why it's a conditional use is because it was in the floodplain. It's really establishing that that you're not going to have a negative impact. On that hundred-year flood, uh, the hydrology summit, upon, but the structural capacity of the bridge. Has no bearing on that use, why you're here, per use and, um. Your, your ordinance has no specific requirement regarding that.
That I don't have any questions. Brian, do you have any?
Well, only, uh, Chris, this is for the, uh, golf only, correct?
Yeah.
Golfers?
Yeah, yes, this is for, uh, golf course, golf course maintenance. So, uh, golfers, golf carts. Uh, the, uh, equipment used to to cut, maintain the course. And of course, if there's, there's, uh, some other type of maintenance associated with it, they, they can provide it, it's. Um, uh, for, uh, within the capacity of the bridge itself.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, David, can I have your name, please?
Sorry, I'm the applicant, Jonathan Furkwood. Uh. To be fair, Christine, it wouldn't hurt to have a people's information start. But that's not a.
I've got no objection to that, um. Do I?
Okay, well, I'm not sure if the applicant has any other witnesses.
We, we have no other witnesses. Uh, I believe you have our whole presentation and motion.
Alright, Mr. Loebenheim made a motion to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Those of you who are.
Hi.
Hi.
Those of you who are here want to comment, you'll be able to comment. Under new business because now the public hearing is closed. Now this matter will be put before the board to vote. At that time, then you can comment if you want.
Yeah, that'll be in just about four or five minutes. Um, we have no plans to act on. That said, before we consider new business. Is there anything to note from solicitor or engineer?
I just want the board to be aware that two weeks from today. Which I believe is September twenty-eighth, there will be the hearing with respect to. The BJ Orchard. Zoning. Change request to add some. Five or six additional parcels to the Economic Development District. And then also at some point, I'll need to get some direction from the board as to. When you schedule the conditional use hearing on Black Buffalo.
What is our time clock on that?
I'd have to look again. It would be sixty days from filing application date. My guess is probably. Third, fourth week. October. Okay, if I recall correctly.
Do we have enough leeway time to to schedule that at the next meeting?
Yes, again, I I need to advertise once a week or two weeks and then also have uh not more than thirty or less than seven days. So right now, even if they advertise now. And let's assume the date is October twenty-fourth, just for the heck of it. I couldn't even advertise it now. It can't be any earlier than thirty days before the year.
Okay, all right, fair enough. John, anything that you want to mention?
No, everything that I have are other agenda items, so we'll discuss it when we get to the month.
Perfect. Excellent. So the first item under new business is the consent agenda, which includes. The acceptance of the twenty twenty-one audit and financial statements and then two change orders for. Uh township, public works uh projects. Um anyone have any questions on that? John, if you want to speak to the. Change orders briefly, you you may.
Uh the only one I would speak to would be uh changer number five, the fishing pier. Uh. Again, this change order, this project has lingered uh partly due to. It getting started just as COVID hit everyone, so it slowed the project way down. Uh then we're experiencing uh supply constraints, which has affected costs. And it has affected the cost for the railing. The contractor is asking for an increase. We we've reviewed it. Seems reasonable based on everything that has occurred in the past two years and we're recommending that be approved.
Hi, thank you. Have to add any question?
Yeah, just one for me. Uh how much is the the increase, John?
I think it was for twelve hundred dollars, Brian.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thirteen.
Yep. That said, do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
We'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Next, next is the consideration for the conditional use application by Sean Yen. Um it seems like we had a consensus and uh the board has no issue with granting the the request to have it posted at fifteen tons.
That then Mr.
I thought it was ten tons.
But they had asked if, you know, they said fifteen was acceptable. They have no current use for fifteen, but you know, to avoid the hassle of coming back. Um they'd like it to be fifteen.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. I thought they were okay with ten.
I mean, they they are. It's not going to limit current business, but you know, Mr. Kirkwood just mentioned a couple of minutes ago.
Who?
Jonathan Kirkwood.
I didn't hear it. Uh okay, so they're suggesting fifteen.
Brian.
Correct?
Can you hear? This is Ron.
Yeah, I could hear you, Ron.
All right, Mr. Kirkwood, who is the applicant for the Shawnee Golf Course Matter.
I know that.
All right, he has asked that the board. Allow the bridge to be posted at fifteen tons. That's his request. Whether the board will grant that as a condition or not. We don't know yet because there's no motion on the floor, but that's where that comes from. And you are correct. John is recommending. A ten ton limit, but the applicant is asking for the fifteen, which. His engineer believes is correct and is safe based upon their calculation. So. That being said, I'm going to ask the chair to entertain a motion. In whatever fashion he deems appropriate, get a second and at that point, we'll ask for a public comment and then we can vote.
Well, let's let's be clear. Um John seems to be okay with fifteen, but um to be um. Uh acting on the side of caution, he was suggesting can, right?
Oh, no, let me clarify. I I felt that there was a proceeding that I was not. Present at where the board determined that they felt they wanted a limited ten. This project, this new design came in, which I have no problem with the structural capacity of the bridge being at fifteen. I only recommended that they say at ten because that was the condition of the previous approval. If.
Right, and John, let me say, let me say that it's not our, it's not our place to uh voluntarily increase it. It would be the applicants, Chris and uh and Jonathan Kirkwood. They'd make that request, not us. Not not.
They have made that request here.
Right, we didn't.
Brian, John.
We didn't, right?
Hi, Brian. Nice to talk to you. I'm just letting you know it's uh I did make the request and I would love it to be considered, but it's by no means. Uh uh what has been approved, I'm happy with, so to speak. So, yeah.
Got it. Yeah, no, no, I just that I just wanted to make the point that it's not our business to uh take a situation that. To what ten ton and say, oh, we suggest to be fifteen. That's not our business. That's your business, John. And you're and and that was addressed, so, okay.
Thank you.
No, in summary, I have no problem with fifteen ton limit if that is the board's wish.
Right, and you do not have any other recommended conditions?
I do not.
Okay. That said, do I hear a motion to grant the conditional use application with the provision that it is acceptable by the board's standards to have? The weight limit posted at fifteen tons?
I'll make that. I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim. I'll second. Any questions or comments?
You got another motion?
Well, I mean, we're granting your application in in whole, so that would be part of that.
Just I want to be specific that that.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah. That said, are there any other comments?
If there's any other comments by the audience.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Yes, yep. Thank you very much, Donna.
So you need me on the twenty eighth, unless I give the company probably twenty eight.
I don't believe so because that's just a zoning change. You don't really need you.
Okay.
Because it's a legislative, it's not like a landowner curative or anything like that. So.
Okay.
As far as I know, you don't need to be here unless the board wants you to be here just to be safe.
Get out there.
I don't need another night now, but if you need me, I will be here.
A nice way to describe going to municipal meeting.
We'll need you on the twenty eighth.
That's what we just. Okay, next is the consideration to appoint a second alternate agency open record officer. This is not to replace any individuals, just to add another person that would be capable and then trained uh to do it. Given that Lucas is budget and finance manager and is actively in these financial records. And a lot of the requests that we're getting these days are financial in nature, not necessarily related to the county. I would like to see that he's appointed uh so he can be trained as as a as an a alternate agency open record officer.
This this is a chair, you just my notes. If he's the second alternate, who's the first?
Brian is the first alternate.
Brian is the first alternate and Julia is the is the not the man, she's the the office.
She's the chief.
Lucas, Steve Bartolo? So anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve those people told as an alternate agency open record officer.
A lot of fun names for that one. Okay, motion by Mr. Lovenheim. I will second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Next is.
So now we have Jacob, now we have three regular officers, correct?
Yes, yep. Nothing can be missed.
Three officers.
Yeah, David's last words.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. Next is the consideration of split cost at Delaware Watergate Fire Company over some uh bills and then radio grants. This is something that uh Chief Ike had submitted uh recently. He is working with six other fire companies. To uh. Secure funding for the radio project that the county is mandating. Um. Given that uh we would be part of that countywide project. Um as we committed to last uh or in January, you know, I think be fair if we would commit to the thousand dollars to match. Uh their application because then that's going to save us money with the rest of our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um. And then the rest of the request was to outfit uh one firefighter and then repairs for. A fire engine, which we've done similar things for for both Shawnee and uh Marshall's Creek Fire Company.
What's the cost?
That is six thousand three hundred one dollars. That includes both the the repairs as well as outfitting a uh one firefighter. It's about what we've done for uh the other fire companies, uh mostly with tires, but. This uh also seemed like a positive development, seeing that they serve hundreds of our residents as well. All right, anyone have any questions? I would I would move that we split those costs and make that match. Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Day uh day, Jacob, day here, Brian.
Okay. Do we know? Uh next is the discussion. Next is the discussion with regard to the twenty twenty-two F six hundred quote. Julia, can you shed some light on that?
Uh sure, this is the truck that the board voted unanimously to uh approve and purchase on August tenth of twenty twenty-one. Uh we got the truck a little bit earlier than we are expecting. Uh so now it is time to come and discuss payment for the truck.
I thought we did. I Julia, I thought we agreed on how we'd pay for it.
Uh well, the board initially agreed that you would pay it outright. And then because of COVID concerns, there was discussion about perhaps we should consider financing it. Um and because it is time to pay the piper, uh I wanted to bring this back to the board one more time. Uh to confirm whether we are paying this off immediately or whether we are going to finance it. Um I spoke with our budget and finance manager and his recommendation is to pay it off immediately. We have the funds available and because interest rates are going up, we have the option to save ourselves about ten thousand dollars across the life of the loan.
And this is what we initially voted to do was uh uh pay for it outright last year.
That's correct.
And this is this is for the new plow that that we need, right? Because the other one died.
Yeah, this is for the F to replace the, I believe it was an F six hundred, but this will be a new one. Uh and it will have plowing capabilities.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on that? And just to be clear, Julia, the cost uh that we expect on that is approximately a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I believe it's a hundred and one thousand.
And we budgeted for it, so that's that's good. All right. All right.
I'm sorry, what?
It is uh because we knew this purchase was coming, uh if we put it into the twenty twenty-two budget and.
Okay.
So we.
Twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
It's really nice that we can potentially see it in the next couple of months, depending on supply stuff, but it's better than the two-year turnaround I think we were looking at. Okay, that said, uh I mean, since we previously motioned to pay it outright, I don't think another motion is necessary. Um that said, the next discussion is on the Kings Pond Road Culvert.
If the number is different now than it was when you made the motion the last time?
The price has not changed. The price has not changed. All right, Ben, I was going to say make another motion if the price has changed, but if not, you're fine.
Okay, that said, John, do you want to talk to us about the Kings Pond Road Culvert?
Uh yes, briefly, we do have our uh permit from the DEP, so we are ready to go out to bid. Uh there are no restrictions from the DEP as to the time of year that we can. Distract sometimes of the trout stream or something like that. There are restrictions. That is not the case in this project, so. Question really is, when does the board want to put this out for bid? I didn't speak to Ed, see if. See if he wanted to build it. He assured me he did not, so.
How to do it and pave.
So uh we can put it out to bid at any time that you would like. I don't think it's.
Wait about.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe that uh paving season is getting close to being over. And by the time you put it out to bid, we're we're talking about twenty twenty-three.
Well, we, yeah, you're not going to be able to pave it. If if we were to go out to bid. Say we advertise, we need a little bit of time to get the bid specs ready and a whole lot.
Yeah.
But you weren't warned much before. Sometime in November, uh so yeah, you couldn't finish paving then until. They, yep, when they started. So you can wait and we could bid it, say, in January, February, if you think that's more appropriate. And still. The the only the only. Contractors are starting to look at next year for their work.
Right.
You might want to consider bidding it now and we'll just give them uh a completion date of June of two thousand twenty-three. That way. We can be sure that they uh. They'll be able to do the paving.
So long as it's not pioneer.
Right, and we don't have to give them a notice. We can put right into bid documents. We're not going to give them a notice to proceed until like. April, I mean, March of two thousand and twenty-three.
That makes a lot of sense to 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 start that.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does make sense.
We'll put together the bid specs and we'll put it out for bid and uh hopefully we get some good bids for work next year.
That sounds good.
Sounds good, yeah.
Go ahead, Martha. Kings Pond Road? It's it's right up, you know, further up like Craig's Meadow, stuff by Taylor Drive and all that. So it's up there, it's, you know.
Goes up towards the reservoir.
Yeah.
Yep.
It'll be nice to to get that taken care of, especially. You know, with all the hundred year storms that, you know, we kind of have been getting when it, you know, the few times it does rain.
And that's a flooding area too. It's a dangerous area.
That's kind of what I believe.
Yeah. Yep.
That said, our next item is discussion on the DCED LSA grant that closes on.
Do we have to make a Jacob, do a motion for John to uh put the specs together and put it out for bid? And uh and.
I think we'll authorize the bid once, once we have the specs in.
You already authorized me pretty much to do all of that. The question was just the timing.
Okay.
Right. All right.
All right, wow, it sounds good. So next is the DCED LSA grant. This is something we discussed at our last several meetings uh in regard to potentially uh. Uh not renovating, but um repairing the the waterfront park house. And John, I understand you completed.
Well, I I I did an inspection and I did not find anything significantly. Uh wrong with the structure. Uh it's an older farmhouse. It's got. It's dated, uh so there's those issues. I did. I did review Tino's report. He said, where it gets occupied, it should be evaluated by a structural engineer, so I wanted to talk to Tino what drove that recommendation. Because I feel that structurally, from what I could see, I couldn't see everything because part of it's a crawl space, but where I could get in, the, the framing is substantial. It's adequate for residential structure.
I understand the main problem is that the water lateral needs to be replaced.
That has to be replaced, but I finally spoke with Tino literally at 6 o'clock tonight. We were creating phone calls. And I said, Tino, what's, what, what was driving it? And he says, well, the lady for the Boy Scout troops is constantly talking to him, wanting him to say it's okay and saying she's got 100 scouts that she wants to put in the building. And Tino says it's not, he says it's a different use if she wants to put 100 people in there. Which I agree. I'm not sure, you should put 100 in there. I said, well, we could limit it to 50 as a cutoff point. I said, we could limit it to 49. And I said, I think it would be adequate at that point. And Tino agreed, so.
You know what, John? I think, I'd like to have the fire company take a walk through also.
Okay. Now, that's not to minimize the corrections that Tino enumerated in his report. He talked about broken spindles, lasing being in need of repair. There's some outdated wiring. There is PCs in the attic from bats. I mean, I'm not suggesting that all that shouldn't be taken care of. I'm just saying it wasn't a part of the structural evaluation.
Probably not something that we would get an LSA grant for.
Probably not.
Probably, probably barely meets the minimum threshold, which I think is what, 50,000?
I believe you can technically go after any amount you want, but we've been told through Mary Himmelberger that if you don't go for at least, I believe her words were 150, that we have no chance to be.
That's fair. Well, we can, you know, take a look at, at, you know, seeing what it would cost to, to have it done either in-house or through a subcontract.
The immediate practical problem is, can we allow 49 Boy Scouts in it? From what John was saying when we talked about it last, the one problem is water. Guess if we had a porta potty outside, we could, we could handle them at this point, but.
I mean, we do, but it's like, you can't get an occupancy permit because you have a porta potty outside. Otherwise it would already exist because there is a, no, that's, so that's the problem. There's no occupancy permit because the conditions of the, there is a permit, but the, the conditions of the permit are that, so, you know, you have to have the water lateral working and the bathrooms have to work. And because there's no water at the moment, since that broke in the bitter cold of this winter, this past winter, that's what has to be repaired. So Ed, Ed has taken a look at that and he's, you know, working on that, but, you know, beyond that, we will have to address the inside at some point.
But, but I don't think you have a structural problem for 49 or less.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, but 100, 100, that's ridiculous.
I, I think 100 is probably an exaggeration based on the number of times.
I don't know you get 100 in there, but if you did, it could be a problem.
From what I understand, it was actually six.
What about historical building grants, something like that? We do it through the.
We could try to pursue something like that, but the grant or, but the building would need to be then on an historical building list and I don't believe it is.
You could look at that too. It is historic. It is probably one of the, you know, older homes in, in the township and had some history to it, but.
It's clearly built in three different stages.
Yeah.
You can tell, I mean, some of the inside windows are outside windows.
This start to sound like my house.
Well, I've voiced this before, but I'm not throwing money into this thing when it may not be adequate for our needs. I mean, we're talking about 49 Boy Scouts, maybe with, with some work, it could hold more, but it's small rooms. It's not ADA accessible. It's got so many things against it other than, than the Band-Aid repairs, which we might be able to afford. It seems like it's throwing money away to put it into there, so.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to repair it so people can use it for its, you know, old use, but I mean, if, like, like we said at the last meeting, if you want to look at other stuff for the future, I think, you know, there's no reason to, to not help this case while we can.
Well, if it's, if it's reasonable, that's what I'm saying, you know, if we're putting 20, $25,000 and we can get that money somewhere, it seems like.
Well, if you want to investigate the historic stuff, I mean, that doesn't sound like a bad, you know.
I think it goes up to maybe 25,000, but I can't remember. But, you know, we could probably do a lot for that. I agree, it would be nice to have it open.
Yeah.
You can't do much with it. And again, there's no ADA access, so you can't really change anything. You can just repair things, right, John?
Don't forget now, we did some work. Excuse me. We did some work on the interior of that house, including the kitchen and one of the meeting rooms. And we also got rid of all the bats and put up a bat house and removed the guana.
Yeah, worth a lot of money. That guana's worth a lot of money, Brian.
I know, please find out the place. But it, it was all removed. And as I said, there's a bat house out there, so just, just so you know that.
We've got Ed Regina in the audience here. Maybe he could sell it.
How you doing, Ed?
Fine.
All right. Well, let's, let's explore that. I mean, there's nothing else there on this grant for right now, right?
Well, that is my question to the board. This grant does close on September 30th. So we are not going to pursue anything for this house because our engineer has determined that we can't. We're a little SOL for coming up with another project and applying to another one.
I think that's fine for right now. We need a lot of.
Potentially, but with the master site plan already in the process of being.
You can probably apply for the LSA when we have the MSP completed for the bike park.
Correct.
Marshall's Falls.
We are actually still waiting on a determination. I spoke to, excuse me, Brian Smith spoke to Rich Dishman yesterday. And we'll have word from DCED later this week, then DCNR meets on September 20th to determine if we have additional funding. So by your meeting on September 28th, we will have final word on what funding is looking like for Marshall's Falls.
There's hope because there's a limited grant round that's occurring right now. That's due to additional American Rescue Plan Act funds, so.
That's correct.
DCNR and DCED should theoretically have more money to potentially give us.
That is correct. And DCNR did also award the township an additional $285,000 for the Marshall's Falls project for phase two. So worst case scenario, if they refuse to grant the additional funds for phase one, we can then approach them for a scope change to get phase two funds changed to scope one, and then we'll basically be fully funded for the project.
Okay. Alright, well, it sounds like let's wait and see then, but for now, we're not going to apply for a new grant and that's fine. Next is a discussion on Bushkill Ambulance Corps Support Requests. A number of their board members are here. They asked to speak, so whomever would like to address the board first. Debbie Kielik, thanks for joining us, everyone.
Thank you for allowing us to speak to you. You're, you're approaching me because as of right now, there is a decline in the support from your residents for EMS service. We've been here for 57 years and we provide both ALS and DLS service. Of the 2010 subscriptions we sent out this year, we've gotten back 71 since then. And if all 2010 households subscribe at the $70, which is what we use for support, so that there are people to respond, since these days when it takes 18 months for someone to become a paramedic, it costs anywhere up to $25,000. The EMTs take a longer time. It costs them several thousand by the time they're done. Everyone is a mix of pain and not gain. We are the only agency in the county with any volunteers. And we run probably somewhere between 50 to 80 hours a month of volunteer time. All of our management is volunteer. That's not even counted. And all of our clerical people are volunteers. So that is a significant saving. The money that we need is to do our work, the operation itself. If indeed every one of your houses will subscribe, it would be about $140,000 a year. But obviously you can see that it's not happening. Our company that does our subscription mailing has indicated that you and Middle Smithfield are about equal 3.23% of their total. And overall, where we send everything, which is Middle Smithfield, Smithfield and part of Christ, two-thirds of Smithfield is what we cover. There's about 1.82% of the population supporting EMS. So we, we thank you for your $4,500 donation. We've gone over Middle Smithfield's current donation and their current donation is fueled for about $16,000 round now. $8,400 in direct payment and they've been supplying money for tires for us. We have asked them to assist us in making up the shortfall. And there's, if all their people would have, would have subscribed, it'd be $250,000.
Right.
So obviously if the public support is not there, we need to turn to people who represent the public, make sure we can be there. We've asked them for a $50,000 additional donation through the end of the year. And we would like to ask you for the match, which would be in the percentages. We have serviced about 2,000 individuals in Middle Smithfield and about 1,000 Smithfield. So we are asking if you would consider $25,000 as you plan into the next year. If we could have a steady income and we would think quarterly, if $10,000 being quarterly to represent Smithfield, it would be a little less than $20 a household. And obviously the, the easiest thing is to have an EMS tax, which you can apply up to half a mill without going to the. And that would help support, but not knowing that the mileage would equal that type of thing, you sort of chose the number. We understand that you may have a specific place you want us to keep a portion of money. We would wait to hear that from you. I have Ed Regina here, Chairman of our Board, and Leon Prince is on our board, and Jonathan, Julie coming through. Our active. Actually, everyone on our board is volunteer. So we appreciate you showing interest in actually coming to our meetings. And that sort of summarizes everything.
Sure. Oh, that's great.
Any questions, Brown?
Brian, Robert, do you want to ask any questions or have any comments?
No, I think maybe this would be something that Lucas could look into and maybe even work with Middle Smithfield, with Christopher, possibly I don't know who, for next year I'm talking, but 2023, it might be worthwhile.
Yeah, for, for sure. I mean, we're doing this, this study and, you know, that should turn up some answers, but, you know, I think it would be great to do some additional support, you know, this year. I don't know what number specifically, but, you know, I know that they use CIP to service ambulances in the township and we have, you know, paid some of those bills in the past. I don't know if that's something either of you two would be interested in, in, in doing.
I would be.
Okay.
Trust me, I owe, I owe the money.
You're alive to talk about it. I consider that a plus.
Yeah, I would be interested, Jacob. Yeah, for sure.
Alright.
So we can have further discussions.
Yeah, well, that's.
We just wanted to make sure that we, as a presentation, had a formal request to come out.
This, this is terrific because we're getting.
It is our goal to remain here and continue to meet the needs of those people who call.
For sure. You know, definitely have this, these numbers in mind for the, the next budget, but this year, let's certainly move forward with working on these, you know, service bills and, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be in contact.
Yep.
Okay. Do any supervisors have anything they wanted to mention before we pay bills and go to public comment?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to mention might be better suited. Yeah, would be in the executive session. I'll bring that up tomorrow. Okay, Jacob?
Sure. Yeah, no, we could, we could do that tomorrow or, or, you know, after folks leave, after the meeting, it's up, up to you.
Or maybe after they leave, yeah.
For to recognize that I'm not a supervisor, excuse me, but I do have a comment. So you are aware, Middle Smithfield has informally approached the township with a question regarding putting a welcome to Middle Smithfield Township, a welcome to Smithfield Township sign on a property owned by Jack Vasco on State Route 209, just south of Christ Chopper. I spoke with our zoning officer, Ken Wolf, and he has determined that the request as it is stated for Middle Smithfield won't work. The buffer that's required is not present at the property. Both properties are known are one and this will be treated as a billboard, which complicates a bunch of the situation, but the big problem is that it is residential. So this project will not be able to move forward. I'll let Middle Smithfield know.
It's really hard just to have a sign that says, welcome to both of our municipalities.
We, we have been stopped by our own order.
Yeah.
So unfortunately that is the case, but I will communicate to Middle Smithfield Township. I want people to be there.
Ryan, you may remember this has been going on for years.
Years and years. All it was, was a sliver of land too, very narrow. Remember, Robert?
Yeah. I remember.
Kind of remind you, can't get away, but I will. Okay.
I'm, I'm not aware of this project, but this is a zoning issue? Is there some reason why the applicant can't come in and ask for zoning relief?
What?
Well, that's.
Variance?
He was too vague. This goes back many years. Probably, Robert, you were here, so at least six, seven years. And we never, we never got anything going together. It was just, it looked like a recalcitrant billboards all along Smithfield Township property in that area, Ron.
Alright, well, as again, it is a thought. Obviously, this would be something that would be beneficial to.
To who? Who would it be beneficial to?
Well, to people coming into township, strangers, tourists, et cetera.
It's just where it begins.
Yeah, and you could, if you want, waive the zoning hearing board fee so that the applicant could perhaps get some relief, but that's just a thought. It's up the applicant to do what they believe they would want to do based upon the zoning officer's determination.
That's right. Okay. Yep.
Alright, well, I'll talk about that again at some point. Not exactly the most pressing issue.
No, no.
Yeah. The current bills for today are $118,091.31. The agenda listed as $120,709.31. That's because the board, you know, at Lucas's recommendation, would like not to pay the attorney fees for the Board of Auditors as they have not formally appointed their attorney. They still have not had the meeting as Ron notified them that they were supposed to have. So that said, the other bills are regular expenses, you know, for park maintenance and insurance costs as well as, you know, porta potties in the parks and a couple miscellaneous expenses for different, you know, patches and whatnot from the quarry. So, anyone have a motion on the bill?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And now we can go into public comments. Anybody would like to make a public comment? Vicki?
Uh, I have questions to Debbie about the EMS.
Vicki, can you speak a little louder?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't.
About subscription. Uh, can you clarify that? Is there something you can offer? Twenty dollars to you or when can July one to June thirtieth? And what that applies to, if you use our service and your insurance does not cover everything, what we do is we take the first payment, we subtract, and the cost does it, the call, whatever payment might be, whatever's left that shows responsibility, we subtract five hundred dollars, and then we divide the balance. Um, since I live in a lake by hobby down here, and I don't know if you go up to that area? Because I have a medical.
Well, you. Well, it depends. If you're out, obviously, there's always an insurance, but we have been to a house numerous times. There's definitely difference between, uh, and I'd say with, with all these steps. Between an ambulance and fire truck. Fire truck comes in, makes a lot of noise, and a lot of people speaking. An ambulance comes in, takes care of the person, picks them up, and just takes them to the hospital. So people often have no idea where you're in. And didn't learn about it.
And then you are able to go through private roads, but those are not maintained by health. And people are not making that a daily, but during a storm, and you.
We, we do our best. Sometimes we may have to call fire company where the township helps flowers in, flowers out. We, uh, no, no, just saying back here, it's my forty-nine years doing it. So I, I've been stuck in a lot of places.
Well, it's true.
Yeah, we do. We, we don't tell you, you guys are pushing us. We won't make you do that.
And then it works.
Any other come? Martha, go ahead.
Thanks, and I know one more.
All right. That's like one point eight one percent.
On the school off by Shawnee Lake, called the firehouse there. And there may be like two or three weeks. So I know that's a stadium, so what do I do about that? I could pick this to the license plate and it's on.
Okay.
Martha, if you want to send that information to me, I'll contact Penda.
Yeah, because that's.
And you said that was a cross for the Shawnee Fire Station, the firehouse on Hollow Road, the property. Some would act like there is, you know, as you wrote, pretty close to the road, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I take it there's no T-shirt or plastic bag in the window.
Private windows, so I already.
Yeah.
My neighbor thought there was a big, we took it on the winter, so he said, well, we'll come, we'll know about it. I talked on the way over, but the note from someone up the road, it said, he helped get me a farm nearby home.
Oh, all right. Yeah, that's, that's like, that's neighborly. It's not like a a, a more fun solicitation, I suppose. Well, with Penda, you can, you know, let them figure out if it's, you know, currently permitted or licensed or registered.
I get that information from you and us. And get it moving as fast as we can.
Well, yeah, it's gonna be a nice sore and safety hazard at the same time. Are there any other? Miss Sienna?
Yeah, uh, one, I have to thank, one, I just wanted to thank Julia for the whole Penda situation with that dip. Um, for keeping me informed and reaching out to them. I, I appreciate it. You did it so quickly and set us on a loop. And it's very much appreciated.
You are most welcome. Uh, I was very fortunate that Penda got back to me lightningly fast. Yeah, um, so they, I actually, I think I have a response from them from Tuesday. Uh, they said that they patched the area. It's a temporary patch. They're going to be coming back. Um, they said in the next few months, which probably means expect them, yeah, after winter, uh, to do a permanent fix on the area. Uh, this is.
Cherry Valley Road?
Cherry Valley Road.
Oh, right, right.
As you're heading into Delaware. Yeah, there's this horrible jolt.
Yeah.
Well, if you have, if you have influence with Penda, uh, I've got numerous complaints.
Yeah, let us know.
About the, the bridge on Buttermilk Falls, which is in terrible condition. People have broken access there. Um, there have been complaints. Ed has complained to Penda, nothing. Uh, I talked to, um, Rosemary Brown's office about it. They're gonna get into it. But it's, it's a condition which just can't last till winter. They've got to do something.
I'm on that already. Yeah, yeah, he was just.
I really. And they really should repave it. If they can't do that, they've got to pad. I mean, I was over there. There are holes in that bridge that are five inches deep.
Yeah, I know. Believe me, I know.
My second thing is, I'm, I'm just looking for a little clarification because we were told by our council president and one of the guys, you guys were. And then when we came here last time, he said it's not, we're gonna be trading services, uh, I guess employees or something.
Right.
So what, what is, exactly what are we providing to you for our three weeks pickup? Because I'm so confused about that because I thought your staff was unionized.
They are.
Our staff is not.
Correct.
Bringing in non-union workers, I think one would probably be a violation.
Oh, so I spoke with our, our business agent. Uh, he actually called me because someone else had got in touch with them, uh, with regard to the leaf pickup. So there is no grievance because it doesn't remove our work. We actually have a vacancy in our crew anyway, but so there's no, you know, removal of union work. Therefore, the union wouldn't see it as something that they would file a grievance for. And it's something other municipalities do. They, they don't necessarily have intermunicipal agreements on that. When we have like a larger thing, like a, like the Oak Grove, uh, compost processing board, that requires agreement because it requires mutual funding by municipalities to determine you by population and whatnot, you know, who's responsible for what share. But, um, we don't have any, any such agreements for, you know, just the exchange of, of, of manpower like we've done with, with Middle Smithfield and others in the past.
Why would this happen in our building? Um, and aside from council president, you mean Levy, the rest of the council had no idea that this was terrible place. And they're actually bringing it up at the workshop on the twenty-first because they're up and on that you're laterally making decisions for the town without cutting in the other town.
Well, well, that's something that, you know, they're, the council's gonna have to address, but I mean.
And you might want to.
No, the intention is, is to be nothing but, you know, transparent. I mean, it was something that.
That guy is, that guy is a transparent and a people's last friend.
Wow, we're gonna rely upon their counsel. I, I did, you know, hear part of that meeting on, on, on Zoom the other day, but I'm gonna rely upon what they do. I think their meeting is next week. That's right, third Wednesday. Okay, I appreciate that. We'll certainly keep ourselves abreast of.
Jacob is, uh, Delaware Water Gap gonna lend anybody to us to help out?
Yeah, absolutely. They, they are, at least as far as we know, they've available, you know, their crew member, uh, to work with us whenever necessary, just the same way that we, you know, coordinate with Cory.
Cory? No, I mean Delaware Water Gap.
Cory's the roadmaster from, 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 from Middle.
Well, Cory has a big staff. We have one person who has twenty-five hours a week.
Correct.
And we have work to do in our town, and if we give him even two hours, could be monumental, especially during a post-war or some kind of emergency.
Well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, you know, play it by ear and make sure that we're not gonna do anything that's gonna take away from, you know, an emergency circumstance like that. You know, I mean, we're gonna have an open line of communication. Tim, I'll, I'll call you Tim instead of Mr. Snow this time.
Well, Jacob, one question. If Delaware Water Gap lends some labors to us or whatever, will they be paid at a union rate?
No, they would be paid at their own rate, just like, uh, the, the crew in Middle Smithfield is, because they're, they're also non-union.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay.
Well, we're not, yeah, we're not. That, that would just be Delaware Water Gap. They would be paying them. They wouldn't be us. Yeah, we don't pay Middle Smithfield when they help us, and they don't pay us when we help them.
Well, we pay metal.
I wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we paid metal.
Well, we have no current concerns of that.
This whole thing was in the spirit of cooperation and, um.
Yeah, well, that's fine to say.
We share a park and.
Just be careful with it. It ain't your sharing. It's your, your township residents. You know, we gotta be careful. Things are tight all over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Tim, go ahead.
What you're saying, did you truly not, um, free?
No, it's, it's not without expectation of reciprocation of, of some sort of work.
Free.
No, it's just not, we're not gonna, you know.
Because we were told Monday it's free.
I mean.
He said there's no money being exchanged. I said, that doesn't make it free just because there's no.
Oh, correct. I mean, it's, it's, it's not free in the sense that like, you know, people talk about free lunch either. It's, you know.
Well, we just want to make that clear to our townspeople because, and actually our council that we do nothing about this until we board it up again Monday.
If I may also comment, we did speak with our roadmaster, uh, and your, and Delaware Water Gap Borough has four miles of roads, uh, which in his estimation will take them about half an hour to do leaf pickup. Um, so we're looking at a cost to Smithfield Township, maximum two hundred and fifty dollars.
Or what?
Yes, we did notify Middle.
Did you, did you ask them like, because I don't think, I think they're taking longer than that unless you ask them.
Well, we, we have to trust our roadmaster and his communication.
You have good machinery.
Um, we are in the process right now of updating our leaf collectors, uh, because we received a two hundred thousand dollar grant, get a new one, so that one's in the works as well. Um, but I trust our roadmaster when he says it will take him half an hour. So we're looking at a very minimal expense to the township.
It's. I'm gonna have to defer to, you know, them on that. They can, no, I, I understand. No, I understand. I, I appreciate it. Happy to, yeah.
But if you make it, make, make an agreement, it's gonna challenge, you know.
I mean, I understand it. Well, I mean, I'll tell you, it wasn't my personal agreement. It was just, you know, when a request was made and I asked the roadmaster if it were possible, and then we made the offer. But that's, that's what we had.
But did you speak to your other two members on your board before you did that?
When we voted, yes, in that meeting. Correct, correct. There, there were, there were votes taken, yes.
And none of them knew about it, except for one. And that is just making unilateral decisions. We will count anything that comes up. And not, not because of you at all, but because we want to make sure.
No, I can appreciate that. And, you know, my recommendation to them would just be, take a vote.
Yeah.
Which they, which they should, you know, they should be able to do, and then we'll be, you know, good to go from there, and then we can coordinate, you know, dates. I mean, it's, it's basically open for a whole month, just, just because, you know, sometimes leaves fall early, sometimes. Yeah, we're looking at about an average of five, based on the, the amount of time that Ed said it would be able to take with the four mile, so shouldn't be, shouldn't be too bad.
Yes, and.
Sure.
Chair, from what I'm hearing, if you're exchanging equipment uh, in an intermunicipal grant fashion with another municipality, that can't be done without an ordinance adopted by.
Oh, it's not an.
And by Middle Smithfield or Delaware Water Gap, and an intermunicipal agreement entered into between the two faries, so keep that in mind.
I mean, I would defer to the past. There's never been one before, you know, with Middle Smithfield, we had low check.
Okay.
Anyway, um, I didn't realize myself that, uh, this, this hadn't been broadcast to the, to the town council, which it should have been, by somebody, but, you know, would just slip through, was all only that. And from my point of view, having, having lived through the whole Delaware, um, Water Gap Wellness Center thing, I thought, you know, let's make amends here. Let's, uh, let's have a, a better understanding and maybe a, a better relationship in the future. And we, we share a park together. We've got a lot of things where, you know, uh, it would be nice to have really nice cooperate, good cooperation. And, and, and another thing, I think DCNR, I think, um, just came out with some kind of grant that is only available to municipalities under five thousand, you know? And I think it has to be something that we would also be a part of. But, you know, that's something else we could do with you, for you.
Working together is great, making me an unilateral decision is not.
But I, I agree with you. I, I don't know why you worry for him, but you should have been.
Vicki, you had one last comment?
I'm worried about the. Um, people for not working on water, so we need people or gasoline. How come you're not charging the vehicle the gasoline to Delaware Water Gap? Okay, that's wrong. So that's why I.
We had never, you know, charged Middle Smithfield when we had. And, and that includes man hours too.
Yeah, that's man hours, that's truck time, that's everything, if, if we do end up charging anything. The premise is that based on prior administrations, uh, because no intermunicipal agreement was ever created regarding Middle Smithfield's exchange of services with Smithfield Township. It was, the whole concept then was that we would take that premise that was established by the Board of Supervisors of the past and just shift it onto a new municipality. So we don't charge Middle Smithfield for the fuel that our guys use when our equipment goes over to assist them, just as they don't charge us for anything. So what the concept was, is take this established concept between Smithfield Township and Middle Smithfield Township, that has been a working relationship for
Decades.
decades, admittedly, um, far longer than I've been here. And simply shift it to another municipality so we can start that and, and be better neighbors to one another.
Right, because it doesn't buy them participation in Oak Grove or anything like that. That would be an actual cost that they would have to pay. Just like they agreed to pay for the, uh, seven hundred eleven dollars, I think it was, for the emergency services study or assessment. You know, that, that, you know, we all entered an agreement for that. Um, you know, for things like that, but not necessarily just the basic exchange of, you know, help.
Four miles, how that they're talking about, are there any private roads? Do we need to do, or they're all Delaware.
I don't, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't believe there's any private roads in Delaware Water Gap, pardon?
Yeah, leaf pickup is only completed on.
Correct. And then we have been working with HOAs to try to get a central location, uh, for collection uh, in the past. I'd been working on that. It, you know, if you have any contacts, that would be helpful for Lake Bahala. That's something that.
I tried it, I think, two or three years ago. Ed, uh, agreed to pick up leaves for all the HOAs if they could have a central location for the leaves. I went around to everybody. Nobody was interested. Good luck.
Except the campground. Remember the campground over on the other side? Yeah. They're the only ones. Yep.
That's another side of the case, I guess. So, uh, then that didn't contain, so Middle Smithfield Township's are leaving on Monday in Water Gap.
Right.
Um, talking about what you just said, with the seven hundred eleven dollars.
Correct.
Our council is gonna discuss that Wednesday to vote on it, that they said we're paying.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so like I'm saying, like, it, it, we, we separate, you know, the exchange of help from like that type of. Yeah, we, we break that down the same way we do Oak Grove. It's essentially Oak Grove plus a couple others for, for the. Well, you know. No, we are not. Correct, correct. Yep. Okay, any? Go ahead. I would defer to, Ron, do you want to speak to the legal status of that? Because they were just in court on Monday.
Who was that?
Ron was, and well, and, and, and the Wellness Center and, and the objectors.
The appeals of the objectors objecting to the fact that the landowner curative amendment was granted and the appeal of Water Gap for the denial of the conditional use proceeding uh, were argued before the Commonwealth Court in Harrisburg. Commonwealth Court is the first level appellate court in Pennsylvania. Those appeals were pending for about a year. An argument occurred.
Those appeals were pending for about a year, and argument occurred just this past Monday. Fact that Supervisor Levinheim is present, and, uh, we will now just wait for the court's decision with respect to those matters. It's tough to try to figure out what the court may do. You, we were be, before a three-judge panel in Commonwealth Court, two women and one man. Uh, the last panel I had were all women, so women are taking over that Commonwealth Court, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but they are very, very present in Commonwealth Court, and also in the Superior Court. Uh, I don't believe that the landowner curative amendment will be overruled. I think that the Objectors would, will probably lose on the fact that the township granted that landowner curative amendment to allow a conditional use in the residential zone. As to the denial of the conditional use, that I'm not sure of where the court is going to go. As you heard me say this evening, in order to, uh, contest the conditional use as an objective, you have to show that the use is going to cause more of a problem or create more of an issue than it normally would. Uh, I was asked questions by the Senior Judge Levitt as to how is the township taking that position, and she didn't seem very enthralled with my argument, but by the same token, the decision that is being, uh, appealed is that of Arthur Zulik, Judge Zulik at Commonwealth Police Court, and not really the, the land, the supervisor's decision. So it's helpful that it's a trial judge decision of being appealed, which is not easy to overturn. So we'll wait to see what happens, but that's what's going on with those cases. Right now, that's the status.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else before we undertake? Okay, Vicki, one last question. Go ahead.
That was the losses.
Yeah, he can speak to you about that, that afterward.
To, are you?
To, to what?
I'm sorry, Vicki wants to speak to one of us?
To Ron. No, to Ron.
Okay. Okay. Let's pay the bills.
Alright, well, that said, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, we did pay the bill. Okay, motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second, Mr. Levinheim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM. Thank you, everybody.
Jake, I'll give you a call tomorrow, okay?
Alright.
Uh, I'm sorry, but I, I missed that one session. And.
No worries.
Oh, good.
Yeah, no, we just.
Bye.
I was just gonna say, we just asked some questions about the letter that, that, uh, Ted had, uh, sent to, to Ron, but no action, or not Ted's lawyer, but no questions or actions were taken. But we can, we can, we can catch up tomorrow.
Alright, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Yep, have a nice night, Brian.
Amen. Hey, Rob, uh, Robert.
We're moving with the plan, and we're moving with the plan to let you file something, so that's.
Brian, Robert did respond to you. I don't know if you heard him.
Maybe he's not on.
Oh, no problem. I'll call, Robert, I'll call you tomorrow. Take care.
Okay.
Bye-bye.